6.5, 10:30 a.m. item. Consideration of Presentation of Lake County Parks Recreation and Trails Master Plan. Director Ewing.
All right.
What is yours?
Well, good morning. Lars Ewing, Public Services Director, and I am joined by Mindy Craig and Haley Patton with Blue Point Planning. They'll be giving a presentation, but I'll introduce the item first. I'll start it just by saying, starting in the fall of 2022 when we began, we, the county and through Public Services, began developing a Parks Recreation and Trails Master Plan. The purpose was to develop basically a roadmap for, I'll say, the Public Services Department, but a roadmap for the county for improvements, maintenance, operation, and really decision-making. And the impetus for it was not because anything was going wrong, per se, certainly in parks. I want to applaud the predecessors of mine who built, and to be honest, you and your predecessors who built a pretty robust park system in Lake County for a county our size. Really, the impetus for it was to ensure that where we put our money and where we put our time is where the public has identified the need and the want. So let's ensure that we're spending our time and money where truly we need to. That's on the park side. On the recreation and the trail side, it was really that those were afterthoughts, I think I'll say. And so let's change that mindset to have those be right there with parks. It's not a Parks Master Plan, it's a Parks Recreation and Trails Master Plan. So that was very important. The team we developed at the time was Blue Point Planning as the consultant to really provide the expertise and guide us through it. But there was also a very robust steering committee, specific working groups, in particular a tribal working group that provided very important information and advice to the team. We also had, and most important, I would say, is the community engagement. Mindy will go through a high-level summary of what we did there, but I want to thank all of them. And last but not least is the Public Services staff who are sitting here. We have Katie Galvani, Deputy Director, Celia Hoberg, and Brendan Foll is the Park Superintendent. We had them and others who are, obviously, we're going to take this and it's our responsibility to run with it. So I thought it was important to have them here so that they can hear where we're going to be going. Mindy will summarize the process, but there really was one result I really want to highlight, the result of this plan. There's not one result, but there's one vision. There's a vision statement that's in there, and then seven distinct goals with recommendations and an implementation plan to achieve those goals. So right now, we are in the public review period. The draft plan is complete. We opened up public comment on May 13th. It is out for review through a couple of different avenues. One is on a website. It's lakecountyprt.com. You can view the document both in PDF or directly. You can provide comments on there through the program that's available. You can also review and email comments to parks@lakecountyca.gov. We also have hard copies at all three libraries and right outside in the foyer here. So a variety of options to review. The next step after completion here and after we consolidate comments, both from the board and the public, is that we move ahead from there. We'll come back to your board for an official adoption, but there's already work underway as appropriate for park planning and recreation and trails planning. One example is that we're in budget, not budget prep season. We've already prepared the budget at the department level, and that's submitted into you for, you know, for just a few weeks from now, we'd be considering the budget. So included in that budget is a lot of the information from here, recreation programmers, recreation staff, funding for recreation programs, trails. So there's a lot of a shift in how we're using our funding. So with that said, I wanted to indicate that the timing is good, certainly right before budget, so you can be aware of what's coming in. But I'll hand it over to Mindy, and she'll walk us through the summary of the plan. So, Mindy, it's all yours.
Great. Thank you so much. Glad to be here, and thank you. So just, Lars did an amazing job of introducing this. I'll just say one other thing, which is this is really a 20-year plan that has a lot of actions that are going to be implemented throughout that time. And hopefully, it's also a decision-making tool for the department and for you as you're going through this. So it will be able to be updated and refined as you go through those next 20 years. Obviously, things change, but hopefully, it should be a guiding document that really helps to do that. And as Lars said, we're really thinking about this presentation. Today, we'll go over a very brief highlights of the plan, just so to orient around that. And then we're going to focus in more on sort of the recommendations, so you kind of know what sort of the end result is. And then also re-provide those links that Lars mentioned. But I'm going to have Haley start us off by going over the process and some of the key pieces on community involvement.
Thank you. Next slide. So this is our process as Lars began to lay it out. We started in fall 2022, and there are three main parts of the phases of the project. So we started with an existing conditions envisioning. So we wanted to get a good sense of what the current state was and what the community's vision for a future Lake County Parks Recreation and Trails. So we started with community engagement, and there's community engagement throughout, and also gathering data and looking at trends and things like that. And then we moved to the needs, opportunities, and strategies phase. So again, going back to the community, talking a little bit more in specifics about what they'd like to see in their parks and their trails and recreation, and then developed a set of recommendations that we, again, brought back to the community and back to our steering group, committee, and work groups. And then all culminated into a draft plan, and then in spring, and a final Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Next slide. Next slide. So this is the planned structure. As Mindy said, I'll just go over briefly the different sections. We have an executive summary that summarizes the plan, a chapter about the community-driven vision, what the goals and how we got there, community needs that lists out those high-level community needs that were identified, as well as park development guidelines, a chapter about climate and resiliency and the role of parks and recreation in that, and then recommendations, policy recommendations, and then specific park facility and trail improvement recommendations, as well as a chapter all about implementation, because we want this plan to be implementable. And then we have appendices of prior planning documents. Next slide. So this plan is heavily influenced and driven by the community. So we just wanted to highlight quickly community engagement in numbers. So we had two online project surveys, and we made sure to have both online activities as well as in-person activities so that people could, you know, contribute in a way that fit best for them. So in total, we got, you know, 668 survey responses. There was four meetings with our steering committee throughout that plan, and that was a group that represented the cities, arts and culture, trails, county departments. So that was really widespread. We had a project website that housed all of our materials, three tribal working group meetings, and we estimate that we reached over 800 community members throughout this process. Next slide. So this is the community-driven vision. So this is really what guides the whole plan. So the community vision is "From lakes to peaks, parks, programs, and trails to offer healthy and fun recreational experiences for all while honoring cultural heritage and conserving natural resources for future generations." And then the goals expand upon that and kind of influence how we're getting to that community vision. So activating our parks, getting people to be in the parks and using them best, welcoming the entire community and providing things for everybody, creating parks that are a destination both for people around the county and for people outside the county, ensuring that parks are fostering climate resilience and sustainability, and also bringing people into nature, that people, both again in the county and outside the county, have awareness of what's available, and there's awareness of the culture of Lake County, partnerships throughout the cities, the county, nonprofits, collaborations that are available there, and then stewardships of the parks and ensuring high levels of maintenance. Next slide. So in our defining community needs, we ensured that it was informed by a variety of things. So this is not just only talking to the community, also looking into, you know, trends around the country, what's needed in parks and facilities, what's needed in recreation. So these community needs were informed from a variety of things. Next slide. And these are some of the identified needs. I won't go through all of them, but a few that we wanted to mention was the idea of implementing a system-wide approach and making sure that there's connectivity that people can get from their house to parks and do that in a way that's safe and gets them outside, that people feel safe in their parks, and it's a place that they want to go. Prioritizing water access, obviously, a big part of Lake County is the water, so making sure that people have opportunities there. And then activating parks, making sure that we're bringing people into parks and not just providing a park, but giving them reasons to come and new activities that they might not have done before. Next slide. And then we have a chapter about climate resilience, so this is applicable to what you've been talking about previously, recognize that there are wildfire flood risk in Lake County, and making sure that the parks are part of the solution set to that and that we aren't ignoring those things throughout planning, so integrating climate and resilience considerations throughout the plan. Next slide. I'll pass it over to Mindy.
Great. Thanks, Haley. So the park development guidelines, these are sort of a level of policies that are designed by those goals that help to inform and support the staff's work going forward. So it talks about everything from how do we maintain our parks with a resilience in mind, so native plantings, regenerative landscaping, thinking about drought-proof and irrigation management, considering how to design a park so that it incorporates amenities for all ages, all places, things like how do we deal with dogs, how do we manage all sorts of different elements, all driven by, again, that community vision. It's a fairly comprehensive chapter, lots of detail in there, but hopefully, that's the part that will help Lars and his department understand how to continue to maintain and build the department from a way that is consistent and easy to manage. Oh, and then, I'm sorry, I'm actually on the policy development guidelines. This is on the park development guidelines, which is, I'm going ahead of myself, this is also the same idea, which is how do we design our parks effectively? So thinking about that system of parks is, we want to make sure that when we look at the entire county and we think about where the different residents and the visitors are, that they have a range of opportunities near them so that they don't have to go clearly across the lake to get something that should be nearby them. So thinking about that, thinking about the different size, the function of every park, how does it contribute to the neighbor's ability to have a playground or a skate park or other elements that will engage them in different ways? But also, again, that design aspect of how do you design interesting parks? How do we start to build the character of the lake and the community in each of our parks? So thinking about art and culture as an element that we want to bring into the parks. This was the policy recommendations I was mentioning. So this is the detailed piece about how we actually are going to manage those. And so, again, those are organized by each goal, and they're detailed pieces for every single one of them. So this first goal is on activate. You're going to hear a lot about this, because this is a big new thing for Lake County, is how do we activate our parks through recreation programming? So part of this plan is to be very positive, forward, community-embracing. And what I mean by that is there are some security concerns, there were safety concerns in some of the parks that were expressed, both from the department and from others. What we want to do is more eyes, more people in the parks means safer, welcoming, better parks. So how do we change over that and make people safe? We want to bring them into the parks and activate them. So that's a big part of what we're talking about today, and you'll hear on and on. But that's like the idea that where both the amenities in the parks and the programs together create a greater-than-the-whole is a big part of this. Next slide. So the other thing is that we went park by park and identified specific recommendations that should happen over time. So it's as simple as we should add a bike rack or a water station, or it might be create a walking path to connect them more effectively. We looked at trails, and one of the things that we built this entire project on was the Conocti Trails Plan. We used that as a baseline and then looked at where the gaps were, and we worked with a trail committee as well to sort of identify what were the actual, what are the actual needs for trails? And a lot of it is around the lake, it's where people can't access them. We have lots of great parks that have trails out in the woods, but what can we do within the actual Lake County parks? So there's a lot of discussion about how do we prioritize the trails for people and filling in those gaps. There's also a whole section on new parks and recreation, destination facilities that we added into this. Next slide. So a couple of those new parks was, we looked at that system of parks again, where were there some gaps? So Cobb Mountain was one of the areas that definitely was underserved, so there's a new Cobb Mountain Park identified, the New Riviera's Local Park is another new one, a couple, the Blue Lakes Park, a Destination Mountain Bike Park, which is considering, thinking of the new land that the county has acquired, and thinking about how to create a community asset. Again, that system is, we don't have a mountain bike park here, so how can we create a community-wide asset? Things like splash pads and splash grounds at some of the parks to help when the lake is not available, but it's hot, people want to use those, how can we create that equestrian center, indoor aquatic and the community center, which is part of the GFPA that Lars has been working on. Next slide. So implementation, a lot of the times when we think about parks, we think of just the parks. And there's an animation here, so I'm going to have you go through. But what we've done here is there's a lot more around this plan than just thinking about the parks. I think there's one more. It's the idea, again, activating the parks with programs. Recreation programs are probably the number-one thing that this department can do moving forward to serve the community, serve visitors, and make those parks even better. That's a huge piece. It's not a capital cost, it's a people cost, right? Continuing the really high-quality maintenance, they've already done an amazing jobs, making sure that as new parks come on, that that's supported, because that's one of the values that people have. When we look at those surveys, you know, maintenance, maintenance, maintenance is a key thing. Connecting people, the residents want to be able to get to those parks, they want to use those parks. And also, when we have visitors in town, where can they go? How do they know about a park that they can go, they can take their kids, or they can take, someone wants to take a nice walk near the lake, where are those? We want to make sure that we're connecting people to that. This idea of building a department, right now, they have had, and they're amazing crew right now, but there's a lot here, it's a big county, huge opportunities and a lot of needs. So having a department with staffing that can do that recreation, staffing to help with volunteers, so we know, hey, volunteers, let's get all those people in here to help us with trails, help us with this and that, somebody needs to manage those volunteers, and it's an important and a key job. Communications is another big piece, both cross-departmental with all the partners. We had amazing working group sessions with the tribes, and there's an opportunity there to connect further, have programs together, and have a lot more interaction, as well as we have state parks here, we have BLM lands, we have all these other participants in the county who we need to have communications and partnerships that takes people and time to manage those and make sure that they work really well. And finally, thinking about all of our parks, all our facilities, and thinking of the recreation piece, and how do we manage and develop those policies and fees that are fair, affordable, but also help to generate funds to pay for some of those things? So thinking about that. So this plan is, again, much larger than just thinking of a park, it's all the ancillary elements around it. Next slide. So again, I'm going to go through this activating parks, because I can't say enough about that, which is, the one thing we want to make sure is if, within the first year, is to start the programming of parks. And the programming of parks is everything from a yoga class in the park to bike, how to ride your bike, it could be movies in the park, it could be a food truck in the park, it's all different things that are going to bring people into those parks. And part of that is staffing, so having a full-time program volunteer and partnership coordinator who can help bring all those great, passionate people out in the community to help with the parks. But we need somebody who's going to coordinate that, who's going to work with other contractors, other providers, who can use the parks as a facility for those programs. That's a really, really critical piece of the pie. And then how can we work with county staff, like library and the museum have staff who are there, so can we also leverage those? So looking at those internal partnerships as well, continuing to coordinate with JPA, the LCR, and work with all the cities. And then, again, as I mentioned, working with those tribal governments to develop that, a cultural event, to continue to build and expand those partnerships and relationships with indigenous communities. Next slide. So I'm not going to try and go through this I chart, but we have in the plan identified the first program priorities for the parks. We have the basic order of magnitude costs for each one of those items to help in that first year to get the plan going. We're going to recommend that this is updated every year, so once we kind of say, check, we got this done, that updates, and we're using the plan as the guide to get those forward. And I think these are some of the things you'll probably be seeing in your budget requests coming up. Next slide. And it's a two pieces of the same thing. I don't think it went to the next slide. Yeah, there we go. Okay, so I'll just finish us here and open it for questions. As Lars said, the plan is out for public comment until May 31st, so we welcome you to go onto there as well, and all of the community members to do that. It's available at the URL that's identified up on the counter, and I think that's it.
Great. Mindy, as I knew you would do a great job, so thank you for that. And I just, I want to, I want to close before questions from the board, just by saying two quick things. Activate recreation programs, recreation programming. Seems like something was happening on the screen behind.
[laughing]
All right. Anyways, it's already underway. We, you know, it is in Public Services area of responsibility, and it's in our charge to have that done. So, you know, we are working toward a recreation program, a robust program, but we're getting to the starting line. So, you know, to say that we're trying to get to the finish line, we're already doing the work to get us to the starting line. So we're working towards bringing out some programming this summer. It'll be at a very low level, but we're working with, in coordination with the two cities to get something out, and we can only build from there. The last thing that I want to say is just a big thanks to, I'll say, one particular person, but one particular team, and that's Brendan Foll and his team of parks maintenance workers. They, you know, they're the ones, boots on the ground, making those parks, keeping those parks what they are. And they take personal pride and bring a very robust skill set and a lot of hard work to those, to your parks. So I just, I wanted to specifically say thank you to him for really carrying this out. So thank you, Brendan, to you and your team. So with that said, I'm happy to have any questions and look forward to that, whether that's specific comments here and now, or just ideas and closing it out on the 31st. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you for the hard work that it's taken to bring it to this final destination. Looking forward to all the comments that we receive. Supervisor Pieskoff.
Well, I just want to say that I really appreciate you dusting off the Conocti Regional Trails Plan and incorporating it such a big way. It wasn't that long ago when it was parks and trails. And now it's fully integrated with recreation. We've had a lot of really wonderful conversations at the Lake Rec meetings. We're really excited about hearing more about those programs during budget times, because it's just a really great way, with the activating of the park, to engage communities, to have more users of our parks, and to build credibility with Lake Rec and the program. So I'm super excited for you to unveil those, Lars. I know you've been hinting at a lot of things, so I can't wait to see what they look like. And really excited to see a lot of the different dedicated-use trails. We know that there's a lot of trail conflict, and there's been a lot of lessons learned as, over the last 30, 40 years, when you have equestrians and pedestrians and mountain bikers using trails at different times. So I was really happy to see that there are some designations, and there are a lot of best practices out there to make sure that we are all using trails with the best etiquette available to us, and making sure that we're ambassadors and advocates for more trail development. I will say, I spent the last two weekends at Six Sigma, where several thousand families from all the way south, as San Luis Obispo, are regularly visiting our county and are coming here to experience one of their favorite places. I spent the last couple days scrolling through all the kids' social media from all over the region, and they just, they love coming here. And so when you've got those families coming here, they're invested in this destination. And so the more we can do to expand, then we'll have them coming back throughout the year, which is a really big deal. So that's why Klaus Park is such a big deal, the Mount Conocti Trails are such a big deal, more development Highland Springs. And I think there was a picture of maybe a possible pump track at Trailside, which would be super awesome, because another thing that we learned at our RCRC meeting in the fall was that these are the assets that encourage development and economic development, but you have to have availability and access for all user levels. And sometimes advocates can get in their mind that we want to build hard things or challenging things, but really, you want people to be able to access with whatever they have. If it's, you know, walking is a wonderful way to access, you know, you don't need any fancy equipment, that there's full equity across all of these assets. So I am very excited. I think this has been a wonderful investment, so I'm really excited to work towards implementation in the next, well, I've got a couple big projects in my district, and I know a lot of the community members and constituents are equally excited.
Any other comments or questions? Supervisor Green?
Great job. My eyes are swimming through this report in real time, and for those who haven't looked at it, yeah, go to lakecountyprt.com. There is a draft plan there, and it is chock-full of reading material. And one thing I'm struggling with, as you probably were throughout this process, is there's so much. Lake County is home to such a wide variety of wonderful parks and recreational opportunities and trails, but connecting the dots and funding, not just holding the line, but possibly expanding recreational access in certain areas, there's a lot to unpack in here. So it's very excellent in terms of identifying existing resources, potential programming needs, and all that good stuff. And we're not here today to parse through the follow-through, but there's a lot here. Director Ewing would be the first to acknowledge the resources we have are probably inadequate to what our existing footprint is, and when we talk about expanding that footprint, whether through his department or the recreation agency or some combination thereof, it's like, where do you focus? So in my district, I focus on Highland Springs, and I appreciate the incorporation of that recreation area in this master plan, if only because we don't have a separate master plan out there. But Highland Springs also kind of highlights some of the difficulties, depending on whether you're looking at in this report, it's either 3,200 acres or 2,500 acres, and only 100 acres of that is developed. So if we were to take a look at that and develop a master plan specific to Highland Springs, are we focused on the 100 acres that gets the most intense use of? What do we do with the broader territories that have trail inventories but maybe not allow support? So, so thank you. I think this is a very valuable baseline for plotting our future charts, but it also concerns me, because going back to Highland Springs, we've had unmet needs there for 25-plus years, and this identifies some potential options to get us in a better place, but I wouldn't know where to begin. And as soon as I said, let's do this for Highland Springs, I'm sure my colleagues are going to say, well, what about this, that, and the other? And we need kind of a systematic approach to tackle all of these subjects. So this is a very worthy and important first step. Again, if you have ability to comment, please go to lakecountyprt.com and take a look at this. But I still need time to digest this fully, and I'm hoping we'll see some follow-up items so that we can do some action on this.
Vice Chair Randall?
Yes, I know that it's been a while, Lars, and I know you've been wanting to lay this out, and you've been working on it. out and you've been working on it. I do like in reading all the parks and, you know, around the lake for sure, but I know the ones in the district, there's like some other ideas that I see. And then others will be able to comment. And I just really, I like the direction it's going. I appreciate it. And yeah, this is a big, a big document, but I think it's, it's important if it's going to lay out how we're going to move to the future. And so again, good work. Thank you. And I'll make sure we get this out so people can make more comments.
So I will say that this is quite a large amount of information to go through and I appreciate that. I actually learned that there's a Helen Mitchum. I didn't know it was called Helen Mitchum Park.
Yeah, yeah.
That was bad on my part to not know that, but it's, you always learn something new. One of the things that, so I, I love it, but I will agree with what Supervisor Green said is, is what's first, what's second, what's third? And I think that's going to come down to what's brought to us when it comes to our budgets. And I hope that we can look at it from a position of equity and a position of health needs. Our community is not healthy when it comes to overall state health metrics. And I think our parks are an opportunity to change those things. And so I think if we look at it through the lens of equity to make sure that there's access in certain areas, if there's not, we should probably focus there. If there's specific regions where we know health metrics are much lower and parks can help and provide that access to exercise or whatever, then maybe that's something we should focus on. So I think as we move forward, there needs to maybe be, I don't know about a criteria, but I think we need to think through why are we prioritizing this? What's not in that location versus what sounds the best? And so I think that as we move forward, we will identify what exactly will be prioritized on this list rather than looking at all 28 parks at the same time and trying to figure out how to move them all forward. There is one part, and I do see it sprinkled all over. The climate resiliency spoke to flooding and fires, but it didn't really speak about drought. And I did see it in a couple of parks where there might be a reduction of lawn or things of the kind. But to me, especially during extreme droughts, we should be the leading example for our community that green space is not always the most appropriate thing. And so it, I, I don't want to change anything what's in the report, but it's just something I want to highlight that I think eventually we're going to have to find a way to make that green space still available for recreational purposes, but not necessarily be turf or lawn. I think the state of California is already heading in that direction, but eventually we're going to have to figure out how to transform our parks or parts of our parks to be less heavy water, have such heavy water needs. I think that's part of the resilience that I was looking for when I looked at climate change more so than the flooding issues or the fire issues. But other than that, I, I love the fact that we have such a broad array of parks and activities to take on in those parks in our communities. And those are the types of things that I think attract people and want to come back and continue to live here. So.
If I can comment really quick, it's a little interesting that of the two parks that were mentioned, those were two that are coincidentally enough, not public services parks, they are county parks. Highland Springs and Helen Mitchum Park are both managed, they are the only two parks, county parks that are managed by other departments.
Yes, sir.
So I guess my work is done and you can go talk to the other.
[Laughter]
But nevertheless, I, I do want to emphasize that, that this plan is, you know, it is high level, provides recommendations of individual parks, but by no means is it a master plan for each park. That's a, that's a separate, what I'm recognizing is that that's a, that's a separate, same term, you know, master plan, but, but certainly a different endeavor. So, so any of the recommendations that may be in there are just that. They'd be recommendations that would need to be vetted out further. And on the drought piece, I just want to comment that I'm fairly certain that that is embedded in some of the recommendations for, for, well, design and, and maintenance, that that needs to be considered when we, when we go to design any new parks or redesign existing parks that, that, you know, water use and drought tolerance is, is a big component of that. So while it may not be in the climate resilience piece, I think it is embedded elsewhere.
Yeah, I'll just add to that because I think that it's actually something I'm really passionate about as well. And so recommending removing as much turf as, you know, possible is one of the actual recommendations in that policy section I mentioned. So yeah, I think we're right there and maybe we can highlight it even more in that climate piece, but yeah, you're absolutely going to see that. And I think one thing I'll just add to on equity, health and a couple of other things, that one of the things that's exciting about bringing in recreation is that it is a relatively low cost way to target and go and connect with communities throughout on equity and health. And I think that's something that you can have a space, but if you're not bringing the programming to that space, you can't serve those communities. And so this is a great opportunity to expand services without the high level of capital costs in many ways. So I just, I think that's a really exciting piece of this, which is not only that activation, but it's also this very flexible, mobile mechanism that the county will have to, to serve a lot of people.
There is a time and a place certainly for turf, so I don't, I don't want to indicate that we wouldn't be including it. So, you know.
It's, it's hard to play soccer.
Exactly.
On a non-turf.
Oh, you got to have your soccer field. Right.
I say that because we're reviewing, you know, design plans for, for a park that includes turf. And so I wouldn't want to be coming to the board with a, you know, a project that, that includes turf and here you are trying to balance. Well, hang on, we were just talking about needing to, needing to reduce that, but there's a balance there.
There's a place and time for it, absolutely. My last comment, and I apologize if I just didn't see the details, but there's very specific identified areas of focusing on the trails. I did not notice, and maybe I missed it, the connection of maybe out of county trails or connections to our national monument. Not sure if those are things I missed. I know I've been on some calls with the national monument, the BLM. When they talk about trails, we've talked about Davis out in the city of Clear Lake connecting out, which is really strange that the entry point for a trail would be right next to the landfill, but it's the best direct access we have. But I know that there was also some conversations about the Walker Ridge area connecting and even some other roads up in the Lucerne Hills area. And I just want to make sure that we can connect to trails that already exist so that we can truly expand what we have.
Yeah. My, my comment to that really is, is that the, the Conackdie Regional Trails Plan, which is still a valid document, and, and we started this project not with the intention of replacing that, but with augmenting it. And that's a, you know, the regional trails perspective. It certainly focused on recreation, but, but it provided a, a large component of connectivity between, both for transportation purposes, but also connectivity between parks or, you know, state, federal or county. So, so the, the focus that we had was how, what do we have responsibility for? How can, how can we do that on a truly a recreation basis while still recognizing the KRT plan that does have a big vision for a lot of those, those connectivity based trails?
And nonprofits that are operating.
Yes.
Over multiple counties like Redwood Trail Alliance.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Green?
Yes, just very quickly, you're right. Highland Springs, not your, I apologize.
Oh, that's fine.
And yet it's there. Also not in this report, you know, Clear Lake State Park here in the House, thank you for attending. There are some, especially when we start talking about funding opportunities, linkage between trail systems and stuff like that. I know it was outside the scope of your study to also address state enforced, federal properties within Lake County, but there are opportunities for linkage in particular. So if nothing else, I'm not going to put you on the spot to make comment on this, but this master plan process is great. The state park is going through their master plan process right now. Hope to hear about that sooner than later someday. But there are some linkages, if only to look for sources of funding. And if we can have shared purposes, multi-jurisdictional planning going on, that would be awesome. So didn't see that specified in here.
And I wanted to include those two parks, the county parks that are non-public services because it's a county plan, it's not a public services plan. So we did work with, with water resources and special districts and Jared here from, from Clear Lake State Park, yes, with the general plan. And I appreciate his delay of his first stakeholder meeting for the general plan with, with state parks that was scheduled for right now or end of 12. And he, I think wisely recognized the, that this, this plan, as well as a previous item at the board for Hitch, played a big factor in, in the future of Clear Lake State Park. So yeah, we are, we're working with, with him. I look forward to being on the, on the stakeholder list with, with his planning effort and, you know, looking to how, both at a local level, Clear Lake State Park and Mount Conackdie Park, but also Clear Lake State Park and the entirety of, of the, of the county park system, how, how does it, how does it interrelate and how can we collaborate together? So, so yes, that, that, you know, the partnerships are, are there at the state park level. We need to foster that. I would suggest more with the, with the federal partners, but, but nevertheless, at the state park level, I'm, I'm looking forward to that.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, appreciate the plan. A lot of information, a lot of good stuff. Connectivity, you said it earlier, getting those folks, finishing up a multi-use path in Middletown. We need one to go out to Trailside Park. Connectivity from Hidden Valley to Middletown, people riding their bikes on the road, people walking through town. Still a situation, you know, it's pretty dangerous there, but looking at that connectivity opportunity, you know, with something down the road. So fully support everything in here. It all comes down to funding. I would like to see some type of opportunity for donations or something. You go out to the park, you know, maybe a QR code and you could donate, you know, while you're out here. I don't know, but I've always, I always know it's the funding opportunity, but when you go out and enjoy these places, you don't mind giving a couple bucks here and there, you know, just to continue things going. I don't know if we could ever consider something like that for our county parks, but I think we should because you really enjoy this when you go out for the family, whether it's you're walking out there or just out for a party or something, you know, doing your part to help support it is really important. But I think the connectivity issues are very important. The health metrics are really important as we continue to build them out. And then co-stewardship opportunities with the tribal governments here, the funding that is out there too, and the opportunities as we move forward. As you know, and I always say this, most of these, the state parks or national parks were our tribal homelands and yeah, they were beautiful. That's why we, that we were there. It had everything you needed. But that co-stewardship opportunity and conversation happening, I think you have seven nations here in Lake County, when we're talking about funding, collaboration opportunities, I think there's a real unique opportunity for, for Lake County to build these things out and to bring money in. Because as government agencies from tribes, we have opportunities, we just don't have the size of land to do a full park structure, those types of things that we could co-stewardship or, you know, pass through dollars to the county to help build these things out in collaboration. As I saw a bunch of the photos in there where the tribes could collaborate on things. So I think it's a great opportunity. And the more and more I see the parks around the lake and in South County developing and Cobb Mountain are going to be unique opportunities because hopefully the Cobb and the Boggs Forest, all of that stuff just combined together gives us a real unique opportunity. And I don't want to get off subject, but I probably will. Conackdie, you know, your people hiking Mount Sanlina, hike Mount Conackdie. We got to get that. That's a beautiful, beautiful place up there. You know, I think it's neat too, to connect the seniors like we were doing through LTA where we're taking the, the bus trips up so seniors could get up there. Because how can you live in this county your entire life and not be on top of that mountain? It's powerful, it's beautiful and to understand that. So I'm excited about this, but funding is always the issue. I'd really like to see if we could look into a donation opportunity at our Parks and Recs when we're out there visiting them. So that's it.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Let's go ahead and open up for the public. Anyone in the public wish to make a comment on this item? Come on up to the microphone. I almost don't recognize you without the beard.
Thank you. I just want to really thank Lars's team and Blue Point for a stellar community engagement opportunity. We were honored as Blue Zones Project to be invited in to support and really to see the, the brain trust focusing on accessibility to all ages. As you know, you've heard us do our song and dance on well-being. Natural movement, getting out and recreating is really key. Bruno, you stole my thunder with our health metrics, but you know, we have, Blue Zones is supporting tobacco cessation and moving away from tobacco in the county because of our high use rates. We are supporting food systems and better nutrition. On a personal level, I believe that nature cures and where else in California do we have some of the most spectacular natural amenities so accessible? And it's juxtaposed with our negative health issues, but that's changing. And thanks board for being part of that momentum. Intentionality and planning, we're behind on some things, but we can, we can leap forward through this kind of model of intentionality and planning and inclusiveness. And what a privilege to see the innovation, the investment and the welcome. Just absolutely thrilling and amazing and exciting to see in the next couple of decades how this plays out. And, you know, I grew up in Sunoma County and I love Lake County. I'm a bird watcher. That came up in the planning hardcore. I love photographing flowers. I'm a plant nerd. So yeah, let's see this. As some people said, bring them in to recreate and then go home. I know we want people to move here too, but super exciting, thrilled to see, see it all. And thanks to your team. Thanks.
Hardcore bird watching.
Two binoculars.
Two different sets of binoculars. Please, coming up.
John Moss, I want to put in a wonderful praise for, for Lars for keeping the Middletown pool going. Whenever I'm in Middletown, I kind of take a dip. It has very reasonable rates and it's just so crowded and everybody's happy. And he keeps it going and going and going. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else have a comment? Let's start with the Zoom room. We have two folks with their hands up. Betsy Khan goes first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you all from Public Services. I have looked at the plan. I will be submitting comments, but they're all pretty favorable because it's a beautiful document, really beautifully done. I just wonder if you could provide information on how to reach the recreational agency? I don't see it listed in the board's commissions and committees appointed by the Board of Supervisors. So could you tell us how that agency meets and, you know, how to get information about it, please?
If your board would like, I can answer that. So the, the Lake, Lake Rec or the Lake County Recreation Agency meets monthly. Those public meetings are, are posted through the cities. The city staff are, they share the, the responsibility of hosting those one, one month. It'll be in the city of Lakeport, one month in the city of Clear Lake. There, there is, it's a, it's a baby organization, so we don't have an actual presence. We don't have a website. We're working on, on the marketing. We're working on, on getting that presence out there. So, so I, I think, Betsy, to answer your, your point and anyone else who's listening, if, if you're looking for information that you're, you're best, I would direct you to either, well, to me, I'll just, I'll say that. Reach out to me and, and then we'll, we'll go from there.
And I believe there's two separate committees. One is the one you just mentioned, which is the JPA. We also have a Lake County Parks and Rec. They just have not met in, in some time, right?
Correct. Yeah, there, there is an advisory board that we have been on pause pending the, the recommendations of, of this master plan, that, that there is some reference to that with some, some recommendations of how to revise that. So yes, two, two separate entities. One is obviously a separate joint powers authority and then the other is, is an advisory board to your board.
Right. Thank you. Next. Samantha Bond.
Good afternoon. I was going to say good morning. Samantha Bond, Executive Director for First Five Lake. I just want to take the opportunity to appreciate the, the building out of parks and community spaces for our families here in Lake County. I did note within the master plan, but I didn't hear it in the presentation, so I just want to elevate that we are ensuring that our parks and recreation centers and our trails do have accessibility for all. That includes and is not limited to our bathrooms having changing tables for men and women's side for not only our littles, but also those who may be of different abilities. And I just highlight that because that was something that was brought up in a couple of meetings that I was, have attended. It is something that I would love to see moving forward. And as we're building other recreation centers that have indoor spaces, if we can consider also having breastfeeding or chest feeding spaces for those individuals who need that space outside of those. So just, just a couple of thoughts, but I really love this. I think this is great and I look forward to seeing it grow in the next 20 years.
Thank you for your comment. We have another hand? Betsy, do you have another comment?
No, sir. Sorry, I left my hand up. Apologize.
No worries. Just want to make sure everybody gets their time. I see no further comments in the chamber, so we'll go ahead and... I see no further comments in the chamber, so we'll go ahead and bring it back to the And obviously we're waiting for the 30-day public comment period to be done.
Yeah, less than 30 days, yeah, was an opportunity for, for board input. They had no action through this other than direction to staffs.
Perfect. Thank you so much for all the work and looking for, oh, missed it.
One last, super quick question. If there was one constructive criticism, and it may be inputs, it seems boating and fishing may be slightly underrepresented in this. Do you feel like you have good input from our boating and fishing communities or can we take advantage of the last two weeks to do some outreach? Definitely it's critical to tourism, but also we have very diverse user groups. And again, coming back to funding, if we had good buy-in and emphasized boating access, stuff like that, in particular boat ramps that may need some dredging. So can you, do you feel satisfied with the amount of input you've gotten from boating and fishing advocates?
I'll answer this and I'm going to let Lars maybe follow up on it, but I feel like we have, you know, boating access and lake access is a, is a theme that is really important in, in the plan. So we really highlight that need, that there's a lot of spaces and a lot of parks individually that need ramp improvements and boat access, kayakers and so forth. So we have embedded that, but I'm going to go to you because you're going to know better of how you feel about that.
Yeah, well, I, you know, I'm going to take it as, as an opportunity to reach out during the time that we have to, to the fishing community and get some direct input, whether they provided that over the last 18 months. We certainly had, had participation on the steering committee and others that, that were, you know, that were, that fished, let's put it that way, but whether they represented the fishing community is a, is a different thing entirely. So I'll, I'll take that opportunity to, to reach out to them. And I, I know the person who will be up here in my, in my chair here soon for the next item is a fisherman himself, so I can ask for, you know, for his, I think he's standing right, or sitting right behind me.
He's left.
There's, there's a lot, yeah, this, that was not, that was emphasized, I will tell you, by a few members. One in particular was Greg Juisty, that was an emphasis that he had, that, that, that needs to be recognized, that it's, it is, it is a community here and we need to, we need to support it.
And I'd say until the public comment period is over, that every opportunity to get more comments, no matter how well-represented the comments may already be, should be welcomed because they'll just add to what we have.
Yep.
One final comment, and I know you said this Lars, about your staff and everything and taking care of the parks, I just want to thank your Empire Department working on these. We have a lot of parks, there, you know, there's always things that happen, but they're out there working, rain or shine, and they, they're doing everything we need. You know, we just had a great event for the Middletown Senior Center, the chili cook-off there. Park was in great condition. I just want to say thank you very much. So every opportunity we have to do that, all of our employees are excellent, but you're in here today, so thank you. I know Lars said it, but I want to say it too.
Thank you for that.
And I hate to, you know, add on to that, I'm going to jump on that moke because every time I go to like meetings in Sacramento with RCRC or other places, they travel, the folks that are on northern side of the coast always travel through Highway 20. Other folks travel through Highway 20 and they always have good things to say about our parks. So I wanted to make sure you all heard that as well.
It's hard not to notice them, they're beautiful.
They're everywhere.
They are, they are. Thank you so much for the work and looking forward to this being completed so we can get going on the actions.
Thank you all.